Good evening, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order. Ms. Donner, roll call please.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Chesney?
Here.
Ms. Kearns?
Here.
Ms. Lanning?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Richmond?
Here.
All stand for the pledges. The pledge is please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the board, if you can come to the front, please.
Good evening. I am excited to award and announce, recognize, one of our PE teachers here in the school district, Ms. Melissa Vanderpool. She has been selected as a MOSHAPE, which is Missouri Society of Health and Physical Educators, a MOSHAPE Northwest District Teacher of the Year. Candidates are selected based on criteria that reflect a comprehensive and high-quality program that includes standards-based instruction, implementation of best teaching practices in health and physical education, the application of effective classroom assessment strategies, and active advocacy for the profession. So we are thrilled to have one for Northwest Missouri in our own school. So congratulations, Melissa. Her principal and several of her colleagues are here tonight with her, so thank you for being here.
Alright, I'm ready to recognize and honor excellence right now. And you're going to meet a teacher who I absolutely adore, Lucy Mize. Will you come to the front, please? I want to share that Lucy Mize and Haley Jones were selected to participate in the Master Teacher Cadre through the Success Ready Students Network. And it was in partnership with DESI. There's a lot of jargon here, so just bear with me. So the personalized competency-based learning, the PCBL and the Master Teacher Cadre, MTC, is a professional learning program designed to equip educators with the knowledge and skills to create student-centered learning environments. Through a dynamic blend of in-person and virtual experiences, Haley and Lucy deepened their understanding of PCBL, enhanced classroom practices, and collaborated across the state with a network of dedicated educators. Lucy also was accepted into year two, so we're so thankful for Lucy's impact on teaching and learning, particularly in the world of math. So last year Lucy was at Central High School, and this year she entered the college. She's serving at Lafayette High School. So Lucy, we are forever thankful for you. Haley Jones could not be here tonight. She's coaching tennis tonight. So she is away coaching tennis. So we're grateful for Haley as well.
Thank you.
Okay, audience participation. There's a couple. First will be Dr. Hedge.
Thank you. I just want your attention. Quickly, I'm thinking outside the box when it comes to our high schools. I think a one-high-school solution is a possibility, and this is the reason why. Academics. In our high schools right now, all students do not have opportunity to all classes. With one high school, it would allow all students to be available to all students. In the classroom, one teacher can present a lesson or concept, the other teacher can assist in small group instruction called THI. This would promote collaboration with teacher subject matter instructions. All students would have access to curriculums across the St. Joe School District. And all the people who cannot accept the idea of closing Benton and our Central and our Lafayette have colleges in within the one high school. For example, the College of Benton would house the social studies and fine arts. The College of Central would house Lafayette, I mean, language arts or speech. And the College of Lafayette would house math or sciences, or a combination of both, or a combination of your choice. The student-athlete, you would call MISHA, which is the Missouri State High School Activity Association, inform them that you would have teams in 5A, 3A, and 1A, boys and girls division, with the collaboration with the coaches in each sports or activity, select a student-athlete to compete in each sport or activity. This would give all our students an opportunity to compete for state championships and state recognition. The question is, where would you build a one-high school? I'm glad you asked. You would call a special meeting of the leadership of the Fairview Municipal Golf Course, Moeda Golf Course, and the St. Joe Country Club. They would share the vision of promoting participation and revenue for the golf course, and this would make the public schools, the public high school, a crown jewel in our community, academically and athletically. Companies and businesses would want to come because we have the best academic complex in the state. Build a one-high school at Fairview Golf Course. Plenty of land. This would address the middle school feeder issue. All middle school schools would, all roads would lead to the one public high school. This is just a skeleton concept. I only have three minutes to present. If you'd like to talk with me later, invite me, and I could put some meat on the bones for you. Remember what King Solomon says, "Where there's no vision, people shall perish." Proverbs 19:18. I do have a skeleton sheet that explains some of the concept that I have, if you would be interested in getting that. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Dr. Hedge.
Juniper Brown?
Hello, I am Juniper Brown. I've spoken here a couple of times before. Today I wanted to talk about the CSIP and what's supposed to be the vision for the district forward. There wasn't a lot of participation, and I would like the board to consider that they can either look at that in two ways. Either they have to accuse all of St. Joseph of being entirely apathetic about what our district does, or that somehow they have lost faith in what the board does. Like, there is, I spent 13 years in the military, and there was a quote that I picked up from General Colin Powell about when soldiers stop coming to you with their problems. It's either that they've concluded that, like, there's nothing you can do, or that you've stopped caring, and that both are a failure of leadership. And so part of that is the fact that the CSIP itself was buried in, like, an agenda item, or that the document that was supposed to say, "What all of you have decided to focus on," wasn't supposed to be part of what went out to parents. It's just that if the goal of the district is to educate and graduate students, and we say that one of the things that we care about is graduating students, but we don't check how those same students are doing, or how their teachers are doing throughout that entire process, it doesn't really make sense to ask ourselves why the process has failed. So, like, if you think of it as the radiator, the thermostat that's on your dash in your car, like, you shouldn't wait until your radiator has exploded to wonder if your thermostat stopped working, in the same way that we should be able to have data, I mean, both parents, because I can't find data about what's, like, the Climate and Culture Survey, which is what I'm getting at. I think that should be a priority, because we should be asking both students and teachers, the people that are day-to-day in the classroom, what kind of problems they actually face. And that should be what stewards us long range. Like, that's literally what planning is supposed to be for. And unless we're committed to doing that and prioritizing that, then everything else on your list falls apart. So please consider that before you vote, what should be the direction that we take for the next five years, is if you've actually taken the time to ask the parents directly, or if the entire board collectively has committed to paternalism. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam President? I'd like to request that we pull 5A, approval of donations, from the consent and two action items, please.
A and move everything else down. Okay, so then, are you making a motion?
Yes.
But the addition of that?
Yes. Make a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
I'll second.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes. All approved? And the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there a second? Thank you, Kim. Whenever you're ready.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yeah.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. And the motion passes. All approves? Okay, admin reports. Dr. McGinnis?
Sure. So we are going to start looking at the facility discussion through the lens of a recap of the September 8th work session. And the reason for that is because things with facilities are happening every day. Dialogue is happening every day. So I want to go back and show where we left off, and kind of fill in some of those gaps to where we're at today. So on the first part, I'm just going to go through some of these bullet points. At the September 8th work session, we reviewed feeder systems and boundaries for options 1 through 5. Mr. Moore, you'd ask for option 5 to be considered due to Ellison's location. And Mrs. Shaunick is here, I believe, tonight, and she discussed the complexity of predicting free and reduced lunch, as far as the number 2, I believe, on the board asked questions. And then we had a lot of discussion about 3 versus 4 middle school model. We discussed the importance of early learning, which is also a vision-forward priority. And Mrs. Chesney inquired about Webster programming, and we did state that special education programs would be moved to an open space in another building. I wanted to add some new information on there, that alternative education, we did not discuss. Friendly reminder that secondary education for alternative is virtual. They have the option to come in person for support. And then we would look at rethinking alternative education for elementary to best serve those kids. And here in a little bit, we'll go through enrollment data, so you can see exactly how many kids are at Webster. We had a discussion on our declining enrollment trend. We reviewed current capacity for our buildings and our current enrollment. Ms. Lanning expressed concern about ADA compliance with the use of Hyde. Mr. Carell discussed staffing with consolidating, stressing the importance of strong communication, and talked about the complexity of calculating staffing numbers for various work groups. We had a discussion on the desire to reduce staffing through attrition, which is our intention to do with our future plans. Dr. Hedgecourt discussed cost savings, both with staffing and operational costs. He mentioned how the majority of the budget is staffing at 75% and how we will need staffing as buildings increase enrollment. And I missed that last piece there, with increasing enrollment. Operational, he talked about cost savings per attendance site could possibly be $120,000 to $180,000, and that we have the need to reduce $8 million over the next couple of years to get back to that board policy expectation of 20%. I talked about Board Policy FC, which requires us to have a hearing, or a series of hearings, to elicit public comment. I know we talked about having that town hall meeting in October on the 21st. We discussed briefly pros and cons of short-term versus long-term vision. Short-term was discussed as Central and Lafayette, which would also probably be more cost-effective. Long-term, we talked about Central, Benton, and Hyde as a combo to set our district up for a new high school in the north. There was discussion on focusing on plans 4A, 4B, and 5, and I want to apologize to the board and our public, because we have expanded that to options 6 and 7 tonight, after looking at all the options and considering some feedback. I do want to add that Plan 2 is still being considered for a Central and Lafayette system, which is also a 3-middle-school model, and would equal more cost savings and be in alignment with long-term plans. Mr. Richmond inquired about field going to Lafayette, Oak going to Bodie, and option 5. And then I just added new information after reviewing options and with board feedback, and then also noting some concerns with Hyde. Option 6 and 7 were created, but we would also like to throw option 2 in there. A 3-middle school model would allow for additional savings. So I kind of wanted to start it with that recap, and then explain that from that work session, we've done a lot of research. We've had a lot of dialogue, and believe that option 2 with Lafayette should be considered. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that here in a little bit. We are looking for the best possible solution for our district, and there are multiple ways to make this work. And so that makes it a bit of a challenge, but I want you to know we are looking at multiple sources of data, including current enrollment, long-term projections of enrollment, capacity of our buildings, and a system for staffing. Mr. Richmond, you mentioned this at the work session, but I don't think any of these options are going to be pain-free. I think there's going to be some emotions, and I think it's going to be difficult. And that being said, we know the need behind what we're doing. So all of this work takes time. We have been researching to learn from other districts, and including looking outside of Missouri. And Mr. Carell's going to speak a little bit about that here in a bit. But I'd like to go through the process, much like we did at the work session, and going through options 6 and 7 in a similar format, where we go through those nine questions. Any questions up until now? Okay. So if you keep scrolling there, Kevin, thank you. Facility discussion, 922. So this was the board's request, a system with Benton, Hyde, and Central, and then a system with Lafayette and Central. And for each of those options, what the board requested, those nine questions. So we're going to go through those. Number 1 was the feeder system, and I know that's the board's intention and our goal too, to have those cohorts all go together. Currently, right now, we have Carden Park feeding into four different middle schools. And we have SCAFE that's feeding into multiple middle schools, and so cleaning that up to where elementaries truly feed into a middle school. So as we redraw boundaries, that will be the goal for our cohorts to stick together. Boundaries is the next one. And Mrs. Shaunick, at the last work session, talked extensively about the complexity behind free and reduced lunch calculations and predicting that because of our direct cert. So she is here if we have questions. If not, I'm going to have Jake Kelly come up to the podium and go over the maps for options 6 and 7, which you should also have at your stations.
Okay, first, I'll start by saying, map-wise, option 6 is the exact same as 4A and 4B. So the difference was, for option 6, we wanted to look at a 3-middle-school model. So, map-wise, nothing has changed on that. And really, you know, 4A and 4B just depended on where you're sending one of your elementaries. But I'll bring it back up, and we can look at it just for reference. But... So the big difference, and what we decided to kind of look at and focus on, was that there was a need for, a few of you wanted to know about ways that we can get rid of Ellison because of its location. So option 5 was born from that. And then, really, looking at the locations of the elementary schools that we had, and the things that we wanted to accomplish, option 5 really didn't fit what we needed to do. So option 7 was born as an alternative way to close Ellison and still meet our needs elementary-wise. So option 7, you should have it. This is, the map that I've got up now is option 7. It removes Ellison, and it turns Truman into an elementary school, and uses Bodie and Spring Garden as the feeder middle schools to the south, to Benton. The thing that you'll notice about this, which I can kind of zoom in here a little bit, and you can see it a little better. So Truman is here on the right half of the screen. It's their feeder section. Bodie Middle School is actually located, you can see it there, in Edison's district, but it is right on the edge. It's about as close as we can get it informally to show the option of how this would be possible. But Bodie would be the middle school then, that the Truman kids go to, along with a couple of other schools. Along with Truman and SCAFE, those kids would feed there, and then would feed south to Benton for high school. But this is an option that kind of pulls that together, so we can close Ellison, if that's your wish, and still make that plan work. Are there any questions about that?
I'll wait. I think it would, kind of feel like we're all at a good place. Can we talk about, so we have how many options now? We whittled it down to 3, and now we're back to 5 or 3?
Well, we're really, 3, where at the Lafayette and Central option, and then the 2 options for Benton and Central. Because 4A, 4B, and 6 are the same thing. It's just, how do you parse it up? 6, you go to 3 middle schools instead of 4, as compared to 4A and 4B.
So I guess my concern is, or I guess, when we're talking about making these decisions, I don't know that anybody, I personally don't have any strong feelings about Ellison, or, you know, this school needs to close. I don't feel that way. What I would like to be able to know is, 1, what you all are recommending that we do, and of these plans, which is the least disruptive to the students and the staff? So I know that when we did the long-range plan, and we had option 2, we had elementary schools that were going to change purpose, and we had middle schools and high schools, or we had the whole system changing. If we have to make changes by August, I was mentioning to Casey as we were walking in, logistically, how we can do all of this. And I guess, my perspective would be, what can we realistically do by next August, and which of those plans will, 1, be logistically feasible, and 2, be the least disruptive to students and staff?
We're going to get there. Our hope is to leave with 2 options that we drill down at the end of tonight, but we want to give you all the information, because we have done a lot of research and a lot of work to gather data and make sure that we're making the best decision for our students and staff. And so, and then, when we walk away from here, and we have requests for certain things, then we look into those options to make sure we're exploring every possible avenue. So, but we will get there to 2 recommended options at the end. Any other questions? Or Jake goes on to number 6?
No, I'll keep going until the end.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the new 7, right? And then, so 6, I'll bring it up, but like I said, it's the, as far as the feeder patterns go, and how we have the elementary schools split up, there's not really much of a difference. The difference is that all of your schools feeding Central go north to Lafayette for their middle school, and then Truman and Spring Garden are the 2 middle schools that would feed the south. So that gets rid of Bodie, and has an X as an option for us to close. Pretty simple on that one.
Any other questions on the maps?
So the feeder system there is the same as 4B, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the feeder system is the same as far as what goes north and south.
Except for 1 middle school.
Yeah. The only difference is you feed both of the north middle schools to Lafayette, instead of splitting it into 2.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Jake.
Yep.
And then, number 3, all of the options, we have proposed a 7-8 model. That was mentioned last year as a decision, so we have stuck with that. We also think it's best academically for our kids. Going on to number 4, multiple options allow for early learning expansion to where we can have that 3rd site, which I know is a vision-forward priority. And then DLO added a little piece in here that we currently have a waitlist for students wanting to come to preschool, so we definitely have a need, and we have some additional funding available that we could tap into as well. And then, number 5, a reduction in overall buildings. Throughout all these options, you can choose to reduce to at least 2 to 4 buildings through all of the options. Additional buildings could be retired or repurposed, as outlined in the facilities plan, so that's something that we are working on right now. But those buildings could be Noyce, TMC, Krantz Computers, the warehouse, and Keatley. And then, an assessment of staff recruitment and retention. Mr. Carell has done a little bit of research and reached out to the superintendent outside of the state of Missouri, so he's going to talk a little bit about that.
Ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, yep. So here's kind of what we have looked at so far regarding the staffing plan. So here's kind of what we have looked at so far regarding the staffing plan. So I know it's been mentioned multiple times, but it is our intention and our goal to reduce staffing through attrition, just wanted to be clear on that. We are hoping if this goes through, that we are going to communicate with our staff that could be affected face to face, not through an email, not through a Google form, just to have those conversations with them and have that personal connection. We are collaborating the process regarding teachers, coaches, administrators. We plan to meet with each building being affected, most likely the four of us in here and meeting with staff at a staff meeting at some point. My team in HR is looking at, and I will ask for other suggestions as well, but I have asked them to pull three-year averages when it comes to certified and classified staff that are retiring and certified and classified staff that have resigned over the last three years. I have added to the list the total staff at each building that could be affected. Are there any other suggestions on maybe numbers or things that you guys would like to see? And if you can't think of them now, it's fine, we can.
Yeah, well, I just think kind of an idea of how those numbers translate into the dollars at the end, you know? I know people look at that, you know, we pay $180,000 of bills for a building. That's, you know, heat and lights and, and it's like, well, you know, we're never going to get to eight million. But it's a lot more than that.
Right, and we will have some numbers for you at the work session in October. We're getting close on those. Not close enough to share anything because they're, it's a really, really rough estimate right now. Just want to be clear on those.
Yeah, understood. Hey, I just want to commend you too for thinking about how you deliver the message, right? Because these things are tough and change is tough. And so dealing with everyone directly is right.
And we are in a collaboration with some current and former administrators who have experience in our district of repurposing buildings. For example, Mark Twain, NOISE, just some of those experiences in the past. Over the last week, I've done some research about some other districts in the state of Missouri that have gone through this process similar to us. Unfortunately, there aren't any in the state of Missouri. I did find a school district in West Virginia. I spoke with the director of personnel there this morning. They are moving from four high schools to two high schools. Their board voted in December of '24 and they made that move this August. So there, it is very similar to what we are experiencing. When I read the article about it, lots of similarities mentioned. Kicking the can down the road, that was one of the quotes. I know that's something that's been brought up here. He had talked about the community members who are struggling with, I graduated 50 years ago and I want to stay open. I know that's a concern with some of our community members as well. Their goal was to go from four to two, which they did. And then they are in the process of building a new high school. And in the next four years, they're going to go to one high school. So kind of a, kind of a two-phase plan there.
What's the name of that school district?
It is, it is, yes. Wetzel, W-E-T-Z-E-L County Schools out of West Virginia. He did state that they promised to their employees that everyone would have a job after round one. He said they are not going to guarantee that round two when the new high school opens. But he said that was a big boost for the climate culture that their staff realized they are going to have a job. It might look different, but they're going to have a job. He talked about how they reorganized staff. Now, the staff that were being displaced had first choice of a transfer. So when positions came open, they didn't allow somebody else in another building to say, ooh, I want that and move. I asked about climate culture, he said it was better than expected. He actually stated that the students have had no issues with it. It's just mainly the community members. He said, we followed through with what we said and that was key for them. I asked for an area of improvement, if he could go back and do something different. What would that be? And he said having that face-to-face interaction with their current staff members. He goes, we didn't do very well at that. He said, I would like to go back and do that over again. Any questions about that?
Okay, moving on to number seven, estimated costs associated with district reorganization. I am assuming on that one that we are talking about the process of rightsizing buildings. So for example, Lafayette, we had talked about from DLR, the recommendation to expand the cafeteria and that they would need parking. And so, and then example with Hyde, repurposing those, what are they called? Fixtures in the, at Hyde if that was needed. So we, that's what I'm assuming you all mean by number seven. So please correct me if I am wrong, but we have talked about coming up with a list of priorities for those. And I do think that it would be a minimal cost. After talking with Mr. Hausman, we would just have to outline what those priorities are for the redistricting and then determine what you are wanting to spend on those.
Yeah, I think that's right. I mean, the board's not saying, you know, hey, don't spend a dime. We're just saying, spend what you need to that makes sense for the kids and the staff.
Right, and once we get there, I think it'd be helpful if we do have that list of priorities and we just determine what's needed and what's a want and go with that. Number eight, operational savings. This is Dr. Hedgekorth, I believe, correct?
Yes, there is a document in the agenda that talks about building expenditures. And so when, you know, from a finance perspective, when we think about expenditures, you know, kind of put it in four buckets, your salaries, your benefits, your purchase services and your supplies. And so the numbers you see on that document are truly purchase services supplies. It has no calculation for anything for personnel. And so just wanted you to know that, looking at that, you know, I didn't want you to look at that and be like, man, we're not saving what we thought we would. That is truly just operationally and nothing to do with staffing. So we would also have a value of the building once it was sold. That has been in the past, I know Casey said earlier, anywhere from like $50,000 to $500,000. The St. Joe has sold properties in the past, depending on, you know, what type of abatement was needed for asbestos and things like that and what condition the building was in. So you would also get some sort of purchase price that would go to the district when you sold these properties after they were retired. You know, what that is, it, you know, currently what the real estate market is, who knows? And what vision someone might have for those buildings. But that's what the district has been offered in the past for something like that. So you could, I did not put that in these calculations. This is just your annual year-over-year cost to operate a building. Some of those are estimates, you know, it just depends on some of the roofing conditions that some of those have and when those are up for resurfacing. And so these are, these are broad estimates, but at least it gives you an idea annually what we pay for those buildings. And the reason those buildings are listed is because they might have been listed on any scenario within the multiple ones that we started with.
Dr. Hedgekorth, I appreciate you mentioning the disposition of the buildings because, you know, we really only save this stuff if we, if we sell the building.
Correct.
And it's no longer our responsibility. And so I think we've got a pretty strong history in town of closing a school, but then somehow we find something else to do with it. And unfortunately, that can't be what we're about here if we're going to get to this dollar improvement.
Agreed.
And then we also have information about the cost of an average teacher. Can we pull that up?
Yeah, so this is just a generic range that you have for common positions that you have in a school, whether it's a principal, assistant principal, a teacher, paraprofessional, and where they might land on the salary schedule. And so you don't know when you're working with attrition, whether someone might be retiring and might be that, you know, ed specialist, the step 25 or, you know, somebody that might have a spouse that moves to another state and they're only on step two, and so that's why they're leaving the district. And so try to give you a little bit of range there to kind of see a low, medium, high on some of those common positions to see what the overall total savings is. So you can see at the beginning, teacher, even though the starting salary is $43,250, when you add in medical benefits, teacher retirement, the other ancillary items, the total cost of the district is just over $62,000. So that'll give you an idea as we start looking at positions and seeing how attrition can flow through. And I'm just going to define attrition here real quick. Attrition is absorbing a position from somebody voluntarily leaving or retiring. And so I just want to make sure that as we talk through attrition, everybody's kind of on the same page with that. And so basically it means that no one, you know, was ever forced to leave. It was a voluntarily retirement or, like I said, possible transfer to another state due to their spouse. And so with that, you are consolidating buildings, so you consolidate staff based on that staff movement.
Thank you for that. And then number nine, we've talked about if we can narrow that down to two options and we would be able to use that forecasting budget tool to show progress of how we can get back to 20%.
You guys all probably remember the big ledger paper I had with the different colors. When we narrow to whatever amount you want, whether it's, you know, two, three options, I will have one of those for each one of those to show how it affects the district going long term, based on some estimates. And the hard part with that is estimating attrition. And so some years you might have less teachers leave the district. Some years you just have those big retirement years where it's, you know, people seem to all hit the rule of 80 and it's their retirement time, which is a great day for me. And so predicting that, you know, I know Mr. Correll has some history of what some of that movement has been in the past. And we'll use some of those past models to kind of predict what percentage we'll be able to use going forward.
Oh, I had a quick question. I'm back a little bit on the operational, I call them those legends, is what I'm calling them. So they, I was right with you until at the end, you said, depending on whether or not they need a roof. I mean, are those strictly, I was interpreting those as strictly operational costs, no capital.
Sure, so I do have some capital in there, meaning, you know, one year you might have to replace a section of the roof. It's $120,000 and you might have to do it for five years. And so it just depends on when that cycle hits for some of these buildings to have some of those ongoing maintenance. The ones on the left are just your utilities. You can see on the subtotal and then, you know, we have copier leases. We have cleaning supplies and paper supplies that go in those buildings. And then ongoing maintenance for some outside, whether you're doing some asphalt, you know, type projects of the building. I just gave a general range on that. So you don't do that every year, you'd usually do that in cycles. And so each building has a little bit different cycles for those things. So I just gave a broad average.
I got one question for you. So I get asked a lot about UG Field. We just redid the HVAC there and we're getting ready to do the roof. So why are we going to choose that one to close?
Was it here when we redid the HVAC at Field?
We did it like three months ago.
And so, or approved that project?
I can answer that one.
And so I don't know the history.
I can step in there. And this is on one of the frequently asked questions document that we just emailed out this afternoon. It's uploaded to Simply Now. But last year, we had quite a few closures at different buildings because they lost heat. So UG Field is one of those, along with Rubidu, Mark Twain and Edison. And so all of those systems were upgraded over the summer because we didn't want kids to miss out on learning. We still have those kids in our buildings right now. We want to make sure that their learning is not disrupted for the winter.
Well, that was also because we were under the long range plan that we had approved last year, that the second part, if that didn't pass, was that it was going to be used as a gifted programming building. So we've gone, my concern is that, you know, you shared that part of the West Virginia's district's plan is that they were upfront and transparent with what they were going to do with the public. We put a lot of time into that long range plan. It had a lot of good stuff in it. One of it was repurposing Field and that's why we did the HVAC. I think it was least disruptive to staff and students. And so now we're, it feels like we've gone very far away from that, so.
My understanding is those HVAC systems were upgraded because school was closed.
Yes, and we were going to continue using it for the foreseeable future. I thought we were going to.
Any other questions so far? Okay, the next piece is the vision forward priority statement. So I know that is a focus of the board. You approved that plan back in December, I believe, of 2022. So I put those vision forward statements on there, the priorities from the community engagement piece. And then if you scroll down just a little bit more, thanks Kevin. So per Board Policy FC, we have to do an impact analysis with those three questions. I did want to go ahead and talk about enrollment data, number three, so that's highlighted there. And if you scroll down, you'll be able to see the three-year enrollment projections for '26, '27, all the way through '28, '29. Those projections are based on the 2018-2019 enrollment demographic study from Preston Smith, if you remember that time. And so if you look at those and then if you scroll down, you can see our current enrollment per building. And it also has the total enrollment. So the total enrollment as of today for K-12 is 9,781. And this is all in your packet as well. And then pre-K through 12 is 10,306. So if you scroll back up to those projections, it's a pretty close estimate. We're actually on the low end, but only about 100 off from this year. So it just shows the trend going forward with enrollment.
Can I feed that back to you?
Yes, please.
So like for, you know, '26, '27, we expect to be somewhere between 9,700 and 10,600.
Yes, so when these were conducted, Preston Smith did a low estimate, a medium estimate and a height estimate, a projection of where we'd be with enrollment. So he kind of lowballed it at 9,873, but we actually ended up at, do you have that?
Where was that? Let's see, it was around...
Where did we end last year? That's on the next sheet, I think that enrollment sheet.
Just K-12. So I just get totally, it was 9,969.
Okay. So he's pretty spot on, on the low end. It's pretty close.
Is this chart that's on the screen now, does it include the PK? Did that, this high-low, high-medium and low, did those numbers include?
No, I don't think that would have expanded. No.
So that, that number compared to the 9,700, whatever it is?
Correct.
It doesn't compare to the 10,000?
Correct.
Okay.
But those projections are pretty close to where we're currently at. And so I think that those numbers looking into the future will also be trending close to those.
Stephen, those are the projections. There's also a history going back to 1991 in your packet as well, if you'd like to look at that, which also includes pre-K and then without pre-K.
Kevin's going to go ahead and pull that up.
Yes, sir.
Key takeaway is we expect, all estimates we expect to decline.
Correct.
And we discussed in the previous meeting that we're thinking about adding another pre-K site because we think there's demand for that, that could increase the pre-K number. Is that correct?
Correct, we keep increasing the PK and we also have the capacity through state funding to pre-set program.
Any questions on this enrollment history? And that 25 at the bottom shows you where we ended during the '24-'25 school year, just last year.
So we've gone under 10,000 for the first time.
Kevin, can I just back to the notes? And if you scroll down just a bit, we have that total enrollment as of 9/17. Right there, thanks. And it talks about... And it talks about the Webster enrollment. So I just wanted to point that out. We do have at Webster High Road program, and that's the contract that we have that we hire out those people, and we also have a director that oversees those students. So we have twenty-one students in that program. We have a public day special education program of eighteen students. And then the next two are the alternative education. So that's when we have the problem-solving team process, and principals can send referrals for students who may be having some challenging behaviors. So with the elementary, we currently have twenty-four students there. And for secondary, that has changed to virtual learning. So all middle school and high school have virtual education. And then they have the option to come to Webster for support. So the total number at Webster is eighty-five currently. I just wanted to break that number down for you. It's on your enrollment sheet, but I just wanted to go over that. Also at your stations, you'll see some of the board questions and answers from members of our district leadership team. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at those. We just emailed those out this afternoon, and they are uploaded to Simply. So our administrative recommendations at this point would be to drill down to two options. We do believe option two for a Central Lafayette model would be the best. And we believe option seven for a Central Benton Hyde model would be the best option in that route. Both of those options allow for expansion of early learning. One of these options reduces three buildings and the other one, four buildings. These options allow for a three-middle school model. Option two would be Bodie-Rubidoo-Benton. Option seven would be Bodie-Spring Garden-Lafayette. I do wanna point out, it was mentioned to consider Bodie as a retirement. We do want to keep Bodie because of its gym capabilities. So currently Bodie has the capacity to house athletic events. Truman has two gyms, but without the space to have people attend us. So they have host their games at Cately Center. And so that is why we chose Bodie over Truman. Truman would be repurposed to an elementary. So next administrative steps for the October work...
What would Ruby do in that scenario?
Option two would be a middle school.
What about option seven?
It's an elementary. Yeah, it's an elementary school. So for the October work session, our hope is to provide data requested by the board for options two and seven, and answer those questions one through nine and any other questions you may have along the way. We will complete the impact analysis for Board Policy FC. So tonight you saw number three only. We will complete number one and number two by the October work session. And then next steps for our team as well. We believe it's important to survey our staff, particularly that qualitative data, because sometimes our staff have unique situations that will help us iron out some of the processes and put things into place and problem-solve those situations as things come up. So we would like to survey our staff. And then we'd also consider some in-person buildings, in-person building staff meetings, so that we could go and answer any questions that the staff may have. I know that things are changing rapidly, but we wanna provide that in-person customer service to them to answer any questions along the way. So those are our recommendations to focus on number two and number seven. If we can have consensus from the board, we will drill down with focus on those two options.
It's not an action item.
So then let's do it.
I'm gonna struggle with that. Of those three, option six would have been my preference. And I understand the thing with Bodie, with the middle school and being able to keep the gymnasium. But when I take a look at what's the least disruptive to our community and best serves the entire community, it's actually option six to me. The elements that I think is it provides, now we'd be not just saying, hey, all of current Benton, we go to Central, but actually all current Benton would go to Bodie and Central. And so option seven is the way I'm reading that. Is that correct?
Could you repeat that, Tom?
Well, let me see seven, make sure I don't say something. No, on option two, on option two, well, I don't know, I don't know. I guess on option two, we'd have Lafayette and Central be the two high schools.
Correct.
And all of Benton would go to Central. And all of Lafayette would go to Bodie, is that right?
Yes, all of Bodie would go to Lafayette.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yes.
I said that exactly opposite, I apologize.
And Rubidoo to Lafayette.
So if two and seven is not the will of the board, we just need direction on the two options that are the will of the board.
Well, okay, so why did you choose? If you think that these are the best options and the least disruptive, I'm okay with... Well, because, I mean, I know what you're saying and everything like that, you know, but I also try to keep in mind, you know, that in our positions, you know, our preferences, of course, they come into play, you know, but if these two are the choices, you know, that admin looked at and chose as the best ones, then I'm okay with those.
I agree. And I think no matter what we do, it's going to be disruptive. It just is because we haven't done anything in our district for so long. So it's going to be messy, it's not going to be perfect. That said, we know we're at a point where we need to take action.
Rhonda, what do you think?
I'm good with that. Another thing I did was I pulled up the long-range plan because I was curious what schools were on it. And so I check-marked on just plan seven. And it looks like, according to the long-range plan and what schools we have on plan, I'm just looking at seven in general, we are pretty close to what the long-range plan says about which ones to leave open and which ones to close. So I think that's actually a good thing, that it may not exactly match what the middle schools are, because this is taking into consideration two new high schools. That is not part of the plan, but I think as far as elementary schools go, we're pretty close to what the long-range plan has to say. So, and I'm good with two and seven.
Mike, what do you think?
I can also support two and seven. You know, I was, not that I support it anymore, but I do the Benton Hyde model, but, you know, we sort of left Lafayette and Central alone last meeting. Kinda drilled down into, so I'm kinda glad to see one of those options come back for a little bit deeper dive.
And honestly, that probably would be, we'll have to do some research, but that probably would be the least disruptive of the two options. So, and it still goes down to three middle schools, which reduces buildings. So we do think that should be considered.
Yeah, there's...
None of this is easy.
No.
You know, and it comes with a lot of change for a lot of staff, but we wanna make sure that we handle that with care and compassion.
I think when we talk about disruption, and to your point, it's gonna be disruptive for a swath of people. But I just think if we can take a scalpel rather than a hatchet, both are gonna be painful. I think that would behoove us with the staff and the community better. And so I'm fine with whichever one you find. That's how I'll be lending my vote, is whichever one you find that can best meet the needs of the students and staff and be least disruptive to the district is the one at all.
Are you guys also okay with assumptions?
That's why I missed going, you said that.
Two and seven?
Yeah.
I have one more consideration that would probably help me on option seven. And that is if Ellison was retained at the, with the other schools that normally is associated with. So Ellison went to, if Ellison was included, like 4B has included, included with the Oak Grove up to the Rubidoo area, I would think that would be more consistent for our community.
Why?
Because that's the feeder system that people have invested in and are, that fit with the least amount of change.
But there's changes. I would, if you guys want two and seven, rather than us saying this school or this school, if you guys have come to two and seven, I'd like for us to move forward with two and seven. Does that make sense? Because then I worry that we say, well, what about this? And then we change, then we come back and we have five more things.
I think we're okay with two and seven.
Thank you, we're gonna proceed with two and seven.
Are there any more questions? Is there any other information in your report, Dr. McGinnis?
No. Sorry, I had to check all those documents.
No, you're fine.
I did go over the frequently asked questions, but you do have those in your packets, and they're also available online, so. But if you have additional questions, we will just add to that list and get answers.
Okay, thank you. And like, as you said, I mean, it was only emailed a couple of hours ago, and I didn't really have an opportunity to look through. Okay, do you read, Miss Stacia?
All right, all right. Happy Monday, everybody. I am so excited to share with you the report on academics and kinda lay out our academic department plan. And so that was attached, it's also displayed on the screen there for you. I kinda just wanna walk through with you on the process for this, so that you can kinda see how we landed, where we landed. On July seventh, the superintendent's cabinet, we worked as one team to identify areas of strength and opportunities for growth in the academic service world.
Excuse me for a minute, Stacia.
Sure.
If you could apply it down, please, I'd really appreciate it.
I can't hear you.
Well, if you can speak more into your mics.
Speaking to your microphone.
If you can speak more into the mics.
I can hear you a little bit better, please.
It's okay, we can fix that, but I just need you to apply it down.
Thank you.
Okay, Stacia, bye.
Thank you. And so we did, our team, our academic service team landed on three priorities based off the feedback. And so really, number one was rigorous common expectations for our learning are explicit, transparent, measurable, and transferable. And we want them to happen in all classrooms. We also hope for number two, not a hope, it's the expectation is that data is analyzed and shared to provide insights to all stakeholders. And they are, it's used to inform decision-making. And the third one is that we develop systems to work with the concept of real-world learning and ensuring that our students not only graduate with a high school diploma, but also graduate with market value assets. And so you can see what we have outlined from the state there and what they considered our market value assets. So we did, we landed on, you can't prioritize everything, and so we're prioritizing three things. We are prioritizing the monitoring obstruction that is happening in our classrooms. And so the first one is an internal progress monitoring system with a new assessment that is written on grade level. That ensures equity, and that ensures that all students are exposed to on-grade level instruction. You will see that we want to move to an on-trap designation. And so what that means is, I kinda coined the phrase of Project Forty-Five. So I'm gonna give you some numbers here. Thirty-eight point one percent proficient advanced in science, right? Thirty-eight percent in math, thirty-eight percent in ELA, and thirty-six point six percent in social studies. And so we would love, and the expectation is at the end of this, that all of our content areas that are state assessed are at forty-five percent from a district perspective. And so that's an ambitious goal, but it is one that I know with our team that we can achieve. The other goal that we have is goal number two, which is again, looking at tier-one instruction in all content areas. And so before I share this report with you, you know, just on Friday, we let a lot of learning centered around this. And so I've worked with James Hustler, our instructional coach, Tabitha Kizer and myself, to ensure that our government teachers, we can't weigh the year. Our government teachers have a high curricular material on their hands right now. And so we are targeting government, because government was, at this particular point this year, was one of our lowest performance level on the report. And so our teachers were trained in that and how to use that high-curricular resource. So they're piloting that this fall semester, and they'll pilot a second one in the second semester. And then our teachers will make that decision. Both are supported through the Missouri Learning Standards. And again, that third goal there is the goal that we are very excited about in the work of high school, reimagining the high school education. And you can see those action steps that will take us to that particular goal. Are there any questions about the academic service department plan? I know that Dr. McGinnis plans to incorporate this in this. He said this was shared with our instructional leaders. On August, way back on August fourth, we have shared this with teacher teams on August fifteenth, and just recently on September nineteenth. There have been lots of stakeholders around this work. The other highlight I wanna share is, not only that, but we have to support our beginning teachers. And I just wanted to share some data with you. First of all, the state of Missouri, I'm gonna start with these letters again. And we support new teachers in the St. Joseph's School District with the BTAP program. And what that stands for is Beginning Teacher Assistance Program. And in the BTAP program, we have eighty-one first-year teachers involved in that work this year. And to ensure that success, each new teacher is supported with not only a mentor, but they're supported with an instructional coach as well. Then they attend quarterly learning events hosted by an educational agency. We have two choices. We have the Regional Development Center or MSTA honors a BTAP program as well that's recognized by the state. And we've elected to use Darby Valente Huff as our BTAP representative to lead in the St. Joe School District. And so just last Wednesday, she presented on classroom management and how to build community in your classroom. And so our teachers have had like a month underneath them right now. And I know they were gonna come with questions about, you know, I particularly have this student, what would you suggest that I do? This year, we added a new twist to it, and I shared that in my weekly report as well, that they not only bring themselves, but they bring their mentor or teacher along to the learning as well. That way they have a person to go back to their building with to support them in their practices. And they have to take one of the practices and at least innovate and try it out in the classroom and reflect on how that went. I just also wanted to share with you that the numbers, kinda the breakdown. So in K-six, we have in first-year teachers, that number is sixty-six point two percent. So sixty-six point two percent of our first-year teachers come from the grades kindergarten through sixth grade. Seventh grade and up and other, thirty-three point eight percent. So it just kinda shows you where we're having retention and where we hope to target some specific work at that elementary level. It's not easy being an elementary teacher. You teach all the subjects. And particularly in the grades three to six, which you also have as the accountability measure of a state exam. I also wanted to share, I know Dr. Anderson has done some work. We do have nine new sped teachers as well that make up that number. And it's basically because we moved from the contractual agreements, and we're trying to get them in our system, and that way we save money to put them and support them in the work that we do in the St. Joe School District. That way they learn our systems and processes versus whatever the contractual company that's supporting them leads with. Any questions about the beginning teacher program? I also included the link in there that lays out the entire plan for the rest of the year. I also included the link in there that lays out the entire plan for the rest of the year. I will say our next one is in November, is that first, we get, we help and support teachers through conferences, October's a really tough month, we have conferences, and so it's right in that first week of November. And the bring a guest is their principal. And so their principal comes to that November meeting, and it's focused on being an instructional designer. So. The last piece I really kind of want to get in with you guys and share, oh, I did also wanted to share with you, we gathered some feedback for new teacher learning session, and I included that in the, your folder for you two. So at the end of the learning session, what we do is we survey our new teachers and we say, okay, what are some of the strategies that you plan to use or try out in your classrooms? What are some barriers that would apply the work to? What do you need support with? And then what do you think as a district we need to do moving forward with that follow-up? And you can see that. They create so much great feedback. One of them is scenario-based guidance, and so what that means is more examples of real-life scenarios, and then act them out, rehearse them and act them out, how would you handle this if a student did this to you? Or your principal's coming through or walkthrough, and what should I have ready to go? Other things that they wanted to include was support from administration or counseling staff when addressing student behaviors. So I included that in there as well for you. The state of Missouri is also offering a, like a writing pilot, and we do have five teachers who have signed up to partake in the pilot. And what that means is that our students would be exposed to text, and then they would write a writing piece, and the state would use that as kind of a field test. We want to get our teacher eyes on that to see what that field test looks like moving forward. And we have currently, right now, on the report, we have Stacy Schubert and Connor Schubick, who are over at Lafayette. We have Stephanie Lyle at Spring Garden, who's also partaking in that pilot. Amanda Moyer's at Central will be taking part in that pilot. And then Gillian Jensen at Parkway, she will also be taking that pilot. So I'm grateful for Kayla Stewart and the work at DESI that helps us, she was really a key piece in allowing our teachers to be part of that. So she presents a lot of professional development to our teachers here. So that piece was there, and then I also included in your, I just put the total enrollment, or I'm sorry, a total attendance report there, and I included that in your packet as well. That's always included on the weekly update. I did want to address it and share with you that I look back, Dr. McGinnis was a record keeper and she had really great records, so I look back on September 20th to see where our attendance was at that particular time of last year. The current district-wide attendance report rate right now is eighty-five point three-nine percent. Excluding the Early Learning Center, that rate is eighty-five point six-four percent. For comparison, this time last year, we're almost right on the same spot. Eighty-five point six-eight percent was last year's attendance rate. So what our academic service team has, I met with Dr. Adams and Dr. Reed today, and we addressed, we looked at each school, we drilled down to each school and saw where there was a drop, and so we're addressing those drops right now, supporting principals. What do you need, what can we help you in the support of that? And what we noticed was our high schools are, have increased in attendance, our middle schools have dropped at the secondary level, and then we have a number of elementary schools that are slight drops, not too much at all, so. Any questions about the, anything that we're leading on the academic world?
I do, Stacia.
Yes.
So I'm looking at this feedback for the new teachers, which is really good, because I know the first year is the hardest for them. So is there a plan of action for like the desire support follow-up things that they have on here?
Yes. We have a lot of time with instructional coaches, we have, we spend a lot of time working with principals. We actually push into classrooms to help support that with the instructional coach model. And Darby is going to continue the classroom, besides the designer of facilitating learning, she's going to continue the learning with classroom management because that has shown up in the teacher survey data.
Thank you. Okay, are there any additional questions? If there are none, I appreciate your time, Ms. Stewart, thank you. Okay, Mr. Correll.
All right, the personnel report has been submitted for your review. Also have copies of the supplemental at your stations. If you have some questions, please ask, if not, ask for a motion for approval.
First of all, is that person okay? Well, that's my question. Oh, okay. So you had mentioned that, and this seems to be a little lighter than usual. Can you talk a little bit about what's happening with the hiring? I saw that there's like a form that folks are going to have to fill out. What, is that in effect now, or what does that look like?
Yeah, that went into effect on Friday. I would say it's lighter for a couple of reasons. One, we had the meeting a week and a half ago and probably approved six or seven individuals. And then, just the time of the year, we don't have as many hires. There was an email that went out to administrators. We are looking to not hire any additional staff because we're in a financial situation. So if there is staff that our administrators would like to hire, whether that's, not saying that we wouldn't on a, on a brand-new position, but we're going to, we're going to strongly look at that one. But the other positions would be if we had a staff member resign, we're having our administrators fill out a justification form, just to make sure that we can't cover that in-house somewhere because really, if you guys do decide to reorganize, I forgot what I was.
It's okay.
If, if we do decide to reorganize, and it's just less staff members that we have to place somewhere in March and April, so we are really taking a look to make sure, do we need that position to fill it out?
So, so, give me some other language on that, Mark. So we're trying to not add additional headcount.
Correct.
And we're even justifying backfills.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Not saying that, that we won't add it, but we're really taking a look at it to make sure it's necessary.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion is second.
Okay, whenever you're ready. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved? Thank you, Mr. Correll.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Hedgeclaw.
Thank you. So what I have in front of you this evening is the FY25 final budget amendment. So you have a preliminary budget, usually in June before that fiscal year starts, many times in October or February amendment, and then at the end of the fiscal year, you have a final amendment, just to give you the numbers of how the annual secretary board report, which is our ASBR, we submit to DESI, how that finalizes, so you can see all of the expenditures and revenues that we have for fiscal year 25 on the first page, as well as how those break down to our different funds, one, two, three, and four, for expenditures and revenues on the second page as well. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
So how much total does this cut?
So this is actually looking in the rearview mirror.
This is the back?
Yep.
So then...
Next month, I will have the budget amendment for FY26, which is the current year, for the dollars that we were able to go through, purchase services and supplies for this fiscal year.
And we typically don't get a lot of detail, and I understand, to a degree, I understand the reasoning for that, but when you bring back the final amendment for the current year, can you bring, like, what, what was cut?
Yeah, so in October, when I bring this fiscal year amendment, it will have purchase services and supplies from every area, and whether it was central office, a secondary building, or an elementary building, and be broken out in all those phases. This is just the final amendment from last fiscal year, looking in the rearview mirror. Yeah. A lot of this is also part of just the process with our auditors. Our auditors are in this week looking at this fiscal year as well, and so there are different rules and regulations around funds and, you know, how you finish the year, whether you budgeted in that fund, oriented up in the negative, and so a lot of this is just to show you the final numbers of how last year finished out, for you to see what those are.
Make a motion to approve. A motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Perfect. Any more discussion? Okay. Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved? Okay, next.
Okay, next we have is our August financials. We have three documents in there. One, we just have our longstanding bond project tracking document. As you have, can tell from a lot of the expenditures, we're starting to wrap up a lot of projects, and it's as you drive by different facilities out in our community. The second, you have our healthcare trust fund and the debits and credits for that, for our healthcare trust fund, we're sitting just over $6.3 million, which has been healthy to start out the year so far. And then also our August financials, you can see a couple of trends. You can see the 2023-24 federal payment, which is why the revenue percentage that's been already allocated is, realized is so high in that area. And then also looking at some trends for, like Prop C is a state sales tax that we receive. What's strange about Prop C is it's counted on local, it's not counted in state, even though it's a state sales tax. That's, those are just DESI's rules. And so, so far this year, the state's collected 67 million less in Prop C than they did this time last year. And so the state only propagates out to the schools what they receive in Prop C, so they're a little bit behind this year so far, basically meaning that the economy at this time, this year in the state isn't as robust as it was last year, just for sales tax. And so we're just a little bit behind in that area, but ahead in some other areas. And then on the expenditure side, as you look at the spending and what percent's been realized, that's typical, our salaries and benefits have been typical, and then, yes, the supplies and materials is 30% already, but a lot of our contracts run through our fiscal year, and so there's a lot of bills that are paid in July at the very beginning of the year, because that's when the contract runs, and that's by design. So we'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the financials, whether it's the bond tracking, healthcare trust, or this fiscal year's financial document.
Do we need to do any type of amendment or revision to the bond tracking? Because we have three projects that are complete. I'm assuming complete means there's no more that's going to come out of that.
No more will be built to us on that project, correct?
Right, so then the balance remaining from these comes to about a million, am I reading that right? The 806 plus the three plus the 216?
Yeah, in the ballpark of that area.
So around a million, that's, that's not obligated, no longer obligated to those specific projects?
We did have buildings that we have in Fund Four that's not part of the bond projects, that were HVAC projects, that if we did have savings in this, we were going to look to use those to pay for those HVAC projects instead of having to pay them out of Fund Four.
Correct.
And that would help our budget deficit for this year, if we're able to do that.
So then, we had added money to Fund Four, which was part of our problem, there's no way to go back and fix that, though, right?
We ended this last year with a little over $100,000 in our Fund Four balance.
Okay, so we can't go back and move that, because I think we liquidated something?
You can, you can amend your ASBR for up to five years. If we added more to Fund Four, then we'd be taken away from Fund One, and that would lower our fund balance further.
Gotcha. Okay, any additional questions? All right, if there are none, is there a motion for approval?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Tom, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Anytime you're ready, Mr. Tom. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved? Okay, now it's the bills.
Yeah, one thing I did want to mention is, next month, I will have that amendment for this fiscal year for you guys to look at. I know it's kind of taken a backseat to a lot of the other discussions that we have, but I think you will like some of the figures that you see for what our team has went through for this fiscal year, and looked at ways that we can reduce our expenditures, which will fall a lot in line with what you're looking at for consolidation. So, you know, in that October meeting, we'll look at what this fiscal year looks like, and then we'll also look at, you know, the future of option two and seven, to see how that will project out and forecast. So I think those will tie in nicely together, coming together in the October meeting. So for the approval bills, again, your P-card statement, and then your check register, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have there.
Make a motion to approve. A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. So on here, I'm looking at through the bills, the SHC Services Inc., is that the para contractor or the pairs that we go to? Yes. And is that the one that we stop use, that we're not using anymore? We're still using them.
We are?
I think they are trying to go down, but we're still using them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, if there are none, we have a motion, a second, would you call the vote, please? Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Yes, and the motion passes, all approved? Okay, action items, the tax anticipation notes.
Yeah, so I have a resolution from Gilmore Bell, who's bond counsel, for a tax anticipation note. As you can, if you read the verbiage, you can see that it's not to exceed $10 million. This line of credit is, is a lot like a HELOC or a home equity line of credit, where as we need those dollars, we have the authorization to borrow from UMB Bank. And UMB Bank is our current depositary that we have right now, and so that will make the process very easy, because anytime we have any type of property tax dollars that is deposited with the districts, it's deposited into our account in UMB Bank. So what this does is it authorizes us to borrow up to 10 million. The interest rate right now is looking somewhere around 6%. Of course, that fluctuates every day, as people anticipate the Fed cutting rates in the future, not cutting rates in the future, but right now it's at around 10%. My, I anticipate we'll only be, need to borrow somewhere around $6 million, but we wanted that buffer in there just in case, as a lot of you are seeing, that there might be a federal government shutdown. And if that's the case, of course, then there's, there's no payments going out for any type of project. So be happy to answer any questions I can on this tan note. Basically, we will look to, you know, use that line of credit, most likely November and December, and then when we get those tax payments in in January, we pay the loan back in full. Of course, there's lost opportunity with that interest that we are paying on that, but it's what we need at our current 10.02% reserve ratio, and that's one of the reasons why the board does have a 20% policy, is because that's kind of the range where you, you know, you don't need to do something like this to, you know, supplement the months where you have low cash flow, like November, December is for a lot of public schools.
So this, we're going to authorize up to 10 million, the interest rate is not listed on here, but you're saying it's between five and six. So you'll re, you will for sure repay it by the end of January, barring anything wild?
That is correct.
And so then what's the anticipated amount for the interest at five to six percent if we pay back in January?
Sure, it's going to be somewhere around 80 to 100,000, if we borrow the amount I was mentioning, around 6 million.
And then I think we, we've talked about this at some point, but when we start doing budget forecasting, because we're going to have to do this... because we're going to have to do this multiple years?
I'm hoping next year will be the last year we have to do it.
So at least one more year?
After that fiscal year, I'm hoping we recover enough. It also depends on, you know, building consolidation. If we do build a consolidation next fiscal year or the year after, that timing of that will also depend a little bit on it.
So will this 80, when you bring back a budget amendment for this year, that 80 to 100 will be in that?
Yeah, we will need to pay that interest out of our operational account. So that will, that will be a budget expense that we did not plan for in June.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's going to be in there. And then it'll, I think we've talked about doing a two to three year, that it would include moving forward.
Correct, yes.
Do you have any update on the 2024-25 reimbursement?
Federal funds, still waiting on, on that. I anticipated being this long, but then with the, you know, federal government shutdown, usually those things get played out and then they get, you know, taken care of. In other words, they raise the debt ceiling. And, you know, federal government shutdown only lasts maybe a day or two. So I don't think it will affect us, but you never know how those things might play out.
Is that the swing between 6 million and 10 million?
That, so we, we look to get around $5 million from that 24-25 school year federal programs payment. So that timing of that, when that hits, will be a big decider on how much we need to use our line of credit. And we will use as minimal that line of credit as we have to, because the more line of credit we use, of course, the higher interest we're paying, and the more we've had to pay back at the end of January, when we get paid our local property tax. And I will keep you up to date, every, every board meeting workshop, what that line of credit has gone to, because of our cash flow and where that's at.
Any additional questions?
So you'll, will you, will you call and, like, you'll draw against it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we sure will. Me and Jenny will work closely together on this as we look at our balances. And, because there's a lot of other inflows and outflows besides just our salary benefits, which are at the end of the month. You know, we have our draws from our construction companies that have been doing the projects. You know, we have our timely accounts payable billing that happens on a monthly cycle. So as those get timed out, we'll continue to communicate together and with UMB Bank for when we need to make those draw downs for this.
And so in other organizations that I've worked at that have had a line of credit, there's been a part of the policy that states that the board has to be notified within 24 hours of a draw made. I know that we're approving a draw up to 10 million. I hear you saying it's going to be 5 to 6. Could we get, like, when those draws happen, as they happen, can we get notified? At least in your weekly report?
I will, I will email you that, that day.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Within, within four hours, I will email the entire board and let them know what was needed. I'll also give you a bank statement that shows where we're at with both, so that way you can see when that happens.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay, if there are none of the questions, would you call the vote, please, Ms. Donna?
I need a first and a second.
Motion? Oh, a motion. I thought we already motioned.
Ms. Lanning, you made a motion.
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved? Okay. Policies for GE. Everyone's looked at them. I know there's another one coming up on the list. Are we okay with approving those? Any discussion needed right now?
I made a motion to approve those three changes.
Perfect. A motion, a second. If there's no more discussion, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved? Okay, Mr. Corel?
All right. All right, over the past few meetings, we've had some discussion about policy GCB, which allows the superintendent or its designate to approve non-contractual employees. And then after investigation, we found that contractual employees must, must be approved by the board. So therefore, we have suggested that we make an amendment to the policy that allows immediate appointment of an individual to a position that is, that needs a contract to make sure that the wording environment is not disrupted. When I say immediate, we're still going through the background checks, we're still going through that entire process, just to make sure that this individual is in front of our students versus a substitute. I know you have questions, so I'll go ahead and take those now.
I'll go ahead and motion. Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Okay, now discussion?
So statutorily, you have to have board approval. And so, so then how does this comply with that?
So I did speak with two different groups. I spoke with Ed Council, who is our legal group. And their quote was, "State statute requires board approval to enter into a contract." So then I also contacted MSBA and talked with Susan over there. And her quote was, "State statute regarding employee, employing contracted employees is outdated. Routinely, new teachers are told the contract is not official until board approved, but are allowed to begin employment." We have other districts. We have a lot of other districts to add a warning to delegate this authority to the superintendent or its designate. The Board of Education can't allow this clause, due to the nature of our district being urban and its size, to ensure services are not being disrupted.
So, and so who wrote the, the red part of this, the revision?
That is from another district that has this policy.
Because this is just matching what we're currently doing.
Correct.
This is just, so this is not, this is still not allowing you all to enter into a contract without our approval. It's just allowing, it's just saying what we're already doing. So you're just, you're just codifying what we're already doing.
Well, there was a concern, the last board meeting, that maybe what we were doing was not appropriate.
So, so I'll, so I'll, I'll speak to this. So my concern, and I feel like it started with a concern, and then there was a response given, and then we found out, a couple days later, that wasn't right. And then, and it kind of snowballed. My concern is not, because I don't think we heard this part of what we're doing until later, sometime later. My concern was that we had information in there that was significantly past 30 days, right? So it was, there was a March one, there was a June one, and we were, we were in September, or we were in August. So, so that is, I guess, I guess that was where my concern lie, laid, lied. I still don't think that, I think that it should be the exception, not the rule, that we're bringing on contractual folks and then saying, hey, we'll, we'll get to you within 30 days, because we've had some problems getting them to us in 30 days. As far as this addition, I'm fine with the addition, because it doesn't say anything about, I don't know, it doesn't, how was, I don't know how this is kind of changing what we're doing. Because we're still saying you, you have to get contractual approval, right? From the board?
Yes, within 30 days.
Okay, well, and, and I guess, you know, there was a change. I think, I, I just want to know that we're all clear on what's supposed to happen and by when. I had some real concerns about the allocation move of Assistant Principal Webster to Central, and then us not knowing about that until later. I think some of those things just kind of happened, and I get that it's at the beginning of the year, but it's hard to go back and say, hey, that person's been there for three weeks, but we don't approve, but we would have liked some conversation. So that's where my concern, so since I brought up the concern, like, there was a concern, it was like, it was my concern.
Hold on a minute. I remember that I also added on to it. And my concern is, as everyone's new in their positions and we're looking like, over the policies, I'm just concerned that we're going to set like a precedence, you know? It's a policy and we're not following it. Okay, let's alter it to our actions and not our actions to the policies. And that's my main concern about this. I don't want it to be an ongoing, like, come on, I want to alter the policy to match our movement, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Ms. Corel, I understand the reasoning, right? Because we've got, all of a sudden, we've got an opening.
Right.
And we need to get a good teacher in front of these kids. And so I do appreciate that. Let me ask you this, it was, you know, in your research, you found out that the statute was considered outdated. Does anybody do anything to update it? Maybe we should lobby for that, huh?
I'll bring the shoes.
Well, and that's another thing, like, I know that the lawyers at, at MSBA are like, it's our opinion, you know, it's outdated. And you know what? I bet they're right, you know, but our legal counsel told us, here's your statute, meaning abide by your statute, pretty much is what they're saying.
Yes, but I will, I will say, if we go with what Ed Council says, then we cannot hire any teacher, we cannot employ any teacher until board approved. And I think that could be very detrimental to our students if we do not have a certified staff member in front of our students versus a substitute.
But how are we, I, I guess my, my concern with, with that is, we, we have a meeting every other week, every other week. And as we've talked before, we should know, we're putting, I mean, we're putting a position out, here's when it's been posted, here's when we're going to do interviews, and here's when we're doing selections. I just don't see how we can't fit some of those approvals in those timeframes.
I think it's not as easy as it sounds. We could have, we could have offered an individual job today, and they accept it tomorrow. Let's say it's a retired teacher that retired last year. They don't need a background check, because it's within a year. So the processes are already in place. If we, if they accepted tomorrow, then we would have to wait two weeks for the work session before they could start. And I know that's a situation that might not happen often, but I think this time of year, it's very likely that, to fill these hard-to-find positions, it's normally our retired teachers who are coming back. So I think that's a greater concern or a greater scenario now versus later in the school year. My, this board, over, over the last two school years, the practice has been, let the individual start working, and then we will approve it after the fact. I think it has to be one or the other. If you don't want to approve this additional verbiage, I get that, and that's okay. But we need, we need to be able to put this individual in front of our students as soon as all the paperwork and all the background checks and all that has, has taken place. Almost all of the school districts that I researched over the last week and a half, in Kansas City, in our area, this is the practice that they do.
Is this their policy?
It's not their policy. Their policy states exactly how our policy states. But they are allowing the HR department to employ this teacher prior to it being, being board approved.
My, my issue has never been, is not necessarily with that process. It's that if we're saying we're going to do it within 30 days, we've had some issues with, it hasn't happened within 30 days. So it just seems like I brought up a concern, and then we kind of, it just kind of spiraled into, you know, the issue with the retirement, retirees. So, I mean, you're, you're already doing this. I guess, I guess from, if we're talking about codifying what we're already doing, it should be the exception, not the rule. And I would just like to be able to see, why couldn't we do that in a timely manner? So, you know, we're asking staff if they want to hire someone, that they have to provide justification and they have to fill out a form. That's kind of another level of bureaucracy for them. Couldn't we also get an explanation of why this couldn't happen within the timeline? Because there's been some times where we've approved something, and it, the start date was that date. Like a contractual employee that started earlier in the day, and we had a meeting that night. Could have started on Tuesday.
But that'd be one day that they're not in front of students.
Yeah, I, I get that, but at some point, at some point, the board has to have oversight of the district and what's happening. And one statute of that is the hiring, firing of personnel. And I worry that the more we dilute the policies, then we're diluting our, our authority and oversight. But that's just me.
Well, I know that, like, I know that you said other districts, it's their practice, it's not their policy. Well, well, it means, you know, that they're acting against their policy, and that's fine if that's what, you know, that they want to do. Our community, as you know, is extremely critical of our district and our actions. And if we're, if we're going according to the policies and the guidelines. And so as we make our moves, I just want to make sure that we're doing things legally. And it makes me a little nervous to be going against the statute in Ed Council, if there are other ways, you know, that we can comply. Anything else from anybody else? Any other comments, questions, or concerns?
I'll just add, we're not opposed to having the board meetings, as Mr. Corel had said. So if we want to do that on the fly, and that's the will of the board, we're happy to do that. We just think this would be the best administrative recommendation to best our markets.
I think it's good that you're adjusting my own. I think you're good, you're adjusting the policy to what we're doing. If we've been doing it for years and other districts are doing it, and MSTAs or MSBA says it's fine, I'm done with taking a vote.
Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Would you call the vote, please, Ms. Donna?
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Five, two. Hill yard expansion.
Good evening. So this Hill yard expansion here is what I brought at the last board meeting, and then what we discussed at the last work session as well. In the year pack, I did provide a drawing of all of the work that's being done. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those. If not, I would like a motion to proceed, please.
Motion, a group. A motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Thank you.
If there's no discussion, would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, and the motion passes, all approved. Thank you, Mr. Casey. Okay, Dr. Hedgecorth?
All right, so I'm going to talk about music, I'm not going to talk about choir, band, or anything like that. Music is the Missouri United School Insurance Council. It's what we currently use for our personal, our property liability and workers' comp insurance for our district. So music is a self-insurance pool for public school districts in Missouri that utilize that group or cooperative group to self-insure, just similar to what we do with health insurance, but again, with, with property liability and workers' comp. So something unique about music that we get is we get a retrospective adjustment, meaning that we get paid back, if we have years where we do not have a high liability, we get those dollars paid back to us. And I kind of listed out what those dollars were over the last five fiscal years and what has come back to the district. And so something nice about using music is the deductibles that we have. With music, we have a $1,000 deductible. And a lot of other fully insured models, you have $100,000, $250,000 for wind and hail and things like that. And so what music helps us do is it helps us really protect ourselves. It does put a lot of dollars at risk if something were to happen to the district. So the reason I'm bringing you this today is it is our, if we want to bid this out, I need to let music know by October 1st. And this is the fiscal year that we are on cycle to bid our insurance. There is a Missouri statute, 537.620, that basically says self-insurance pools satisfy that bidding process because as a consortium, they're going out for reinsurance bids as a group. And you're kind of double bidding if we're bidding our insurance and then they're bidding the reinsurance. It's basically why that statute exists and says that it does satisfy that. So I did not just want to take that statute as itself and have it satisfied. I wanted to get the permission of the board to weigh in on this and see if they would like to go out for insurance. The reason why, you might be asking, well, you know, what does it hurt? Typically, when you go out for insurance, you have a broker. And if you go with a fully insured model, that full insurance company pays the broker fee. If you have a self-insured model, they're not going to pay that broker fee. That's just a policy of many self-insurance pools. So the last time St. Joe did this, they went out, they got a broker, they went out for bids for self-insurance. I don't know if they got any full insurance bids or not that were serious, but they had two self-insurance pools. One was Music, the other was some sort of public entity that does city government around the Midwest. It wasn't competitive. We ate the broker fee, still went with Music. And so that's why I'm bringing you this option of to continue to go with Music and not bid due to one of the advantages of the retrospective adjustment program, the paybacks, the low deductible, and then not going through the process just to go with Music again and eat that broker fee. So trying to be a good steward of our taxpayer dollars. Again, ninety percent of the districts in the state of Missouri, the public districts in the state of Missouri are part of the Music program.
I make a motion to renew with Music.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, if there is no discussion, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved. Next is the item of, what's it called, Donna?
Approval of donations? That's what you pulled out?
Yes, yes.
Approval of the donations, is there a motion for approval?
It's not moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, would you call the vote, please?
Did you want to make a comment?
You know, actually, not much, I just.
I thought that he would do it as you made your vote.
Yeah, that sounds good, I'll do that.
I made the motions.
Let me agenda for you.
Thank you. So we're going ahead with the vote?
Yes.
No discussion?
No, he's going to talk in a moment.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Epstein, my current employer, is on that donor list.
Okay, Mr. Richmond?
Well, that was powerful.
A lot to do about nothing.
Right. All right, yes.
And the motion passes? Six one with one abstention. Okay, now informational items, board notes. I just have just a couple of things and then I'll move it around if anyone else. Town hall meeting next month. You received some information, can you let us know?
I did. Last Friday, I went to my quarterly meeting with the Greater Kansas City Board Secretaries and had the chance to ask them who had recently done a town hall meeting and what, what the purpose was and how they constructed it. Hickman Mills said that they had just done one because they are in the process of hiring a superintendent. And then also Carney had one because I guess they're getting ready to run another bond for something. Both of them stated that they had a presentation for whatever they wanted their presentation for and then they opened it up for the public to speak. And they gave the public two minutes each to speak. And they both had a maximum time limit, so it didn't go into the wee hours of the morning. But then they wrapped it up from there. But I felt like, I said, I just didn't know how we should post it, how we should advertise it. They said they went through advertising with their communications department, which we have a great one, so I'm sure they will take care of that. And as far as posting the agenda, they said they just posted it as a regular open session, so. Thought I would give that information to you guys, because I had no idea. Been here ten years and we've never done one, so.
I appreciate that, Ms. Don.
So will we advertise it through the news press or anything so the community knows?
I would say we could. I don't know why we couldn't. Becky, what do you think?
Yeah. I don't know that we get a lot of traction through that, but I think sending it out to our families that we have, posting it on social media, using local media outlets. I don't, I just don't know that we get much traction from advertisement in the local.
In the newspaper, yeah.
Dr. McGinnis, you mentioned that we needed to have, before we voted in October, or maybe, maybe after that, I've interpreted that as before we voted in October, we need to have these public sessions, or a session at least.
So that's that board policy, FC. And it does stay in just a second, but.
I think that has to be separate. Like the town hall needs to be about probably the district or things that we're doing. Then I think FC you have to do about that specific building that you're closing. And you have to be able to show, here's the alternates that we selected, here's the impact.
So it says before each facility is permanently closed, the board will convene a hearing or a series of hearings if appropriate to elicit public comment regarding the proposed action. And that's where we have those three pieces, where the first one is possible alternatives to the proposed action, including maintaining the status quo. And then the second piece is the projected impact that each alternative would have on each school affected by such action. And then the last piece is the enrollment data for the current school year and three-year enrollment projections for all schools affected by the proposed action.
And can we find out, do we have to do an FC for each facility? Or can we do one for all of them, or?
All of them at once.
It's going to be.
It will read like, you can do that all at once, but you would have to have those pieces, those three questions for each school. But I can get clarification on that, too. That's how it reads.
Does that need to come before or after the vote of which?
That comes before what we propose. So we will need to have all of that by the October work session.
And, and then that work session, will, will that be the time that we declare that's the forum that we're, we're having that information? Does that meet the criteria? Or will we have a special meeting that's, that's where I'm asked?
That will be at the work session. We will have to have all of that information before we propose the plan. So that'll be the first piece at the October work session. And that you could have that as part of your town hall. And then if there's anything else you wanted to add, you could do that as well.
I was just curious, realistically, as we get to potentially making a decision at the end of October, we, we don't want to miss that on the way.
Can we also contact legal counsel to make sure that everything is accordingly and we're doing everything in the right fashion? All right. And we'll discuss everything more like at the work session. I just wanted her to be able to give an overview of what she's learned. Also, last week, I attended a meeting with the Interfaith Alliance for Immigrants. And I came over to Ashley and I said, a cool aspect about the meeting was, it was mainly about the school district and our piece in that. And I asked Ashley if the board could get a little bit more information about this from the people in charge of that program, since I knew that I would not give it the attention and the justice that it needs. And so are we able to get Michelle to come speak?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, so what Latonya is referring to, Ms. Williams, is that Dr. Cynthia Chastain, who is the Director of Migrant Education, spoke at that Interfaith Alliance meeting. And she spoke about our program. She gave a lot of credit to Melissa Wallace, who's one of our specialists who works very hard at that, as well as our program itself. And so what we do is we identify students who might be migrant. We do that through a very systematic process, which is every student in the district, when they're enrolled, there is a survey that's filled out. And it asks questions like, have you moved in the last three years? Do the parents work in fishing, agriculture, meat processing, those kinds of questions? If the answers to those questions are yes, then a recruiter goes out and talks to the family and determines whether they are or are not migrant. Once that's determined, then we provide extra services through Title I C at this present time. And so I can tell you some of the things that we have provided in the past year. Tutoring after school, preschool resources for our migrant kids who are in preschool, STEM and literacy nights, hygiene and trauma kits. It also helped with our Family Leadership Institute. And then we were chosen by the state to have Dr. Hector Montenegro come in in the summer. And he did a two-day PD for our teachers called Academic Language and Instructional Supports for Educators. And so our teachers found that extremely helpful for working with our migrant students. Any other questions?
No, I didn't have any. I was just, I was amazed at another layer, you know, that we really didn't know much about. And so I appreciate you coming to speak on that today, thank you.
Thank you.
Another thing, a reminder about, about the meeting Wednesday at Mid Buck. I know everyone isn't able, you know, to make it, you know, but if you are enrolled and you're able to make it, I think it'll be a good time, I know the MC, and so I think it'll be pretty cool. Also, speaking of MSBA, I know that at the conference, a lot of us are attending the conference. And it's going to be really cool this year since I was actually chosen to lead a workshop. And that's never, it's never been, it's never happened in our district, you know, before. And the workshop that I was chosen, you know, to lead, it's, it's entitled, "Leading Through the Storm: Advocacy and Communication in Challenging Times." And so in the workshop, it will be led by me and Whitney. And if you guys have any question or input on that, you know, just let me know. Otherwise, I just, I thought that was interesting and exciting. Anyone, any other information to add? I know a lot of us attended the event last week, Mike. Do you want to speak on that? Because your mouth was opening.
Yeah, well, so actually, that's in addition to, but yeah, several of us went to the St. Joe School District Foundation breakfast last weekend, just a wonderful event where we saw some talented students, recognized some staff, some community members that are, that are big-time supporters of the district. So, yeah, that was really a pleasure. You know, a couple of other things I would add related to.
I might add, I might add to that one for you. Well, Dr. McGinnis spoke, kind of gave a state of the, state of the district charge and it was great. And Dr. Studer was, man, I tell you what, she was pointing her finger out and he said, we're going to do it. And I'd never quite seen that before, but I complimented her on the determination and resolve that she demonstrated to that group about our commitment to academics. And so I thought, I thought every part of the program was good, but since you all are right there, I wanted to recognize you and your part in that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll sit down. The other couple of things are facilities-related, but, you know, as we talked about the Benton Hyde possible high school model and, you know, I'd always heard, I hadn't been in Hyde, and I'd always heard it was one of our, quote, oldest and worst buildings or whatever. But Mr. Richmond and I had a chance Friday. The staff and admin were gracious hosts and spent their lunch hour showing us around that building. And I got to say, once again, you know, to the, to the engineering staff that keeps our buildings up, it's, it's really unbelievable. And so key takeaway there is that, boy, you know, in my estimation, that building is indeed worthwhile of continued use. Yeah, and then just while we were there, we walked across the football field. We love to talk about the football field, but, you know, I think it was Casey at the time had a video, happened to be from Lafayette, we were down at Benton, but it was from Lafayette. And the situation was, the football team was practicing when the exact moment we got the green light that the fields were approved for use. And so somehow that word made it back to the team. And there's this great video of the team running out there and, and hooting and hollering and celebrating and hugging each other as if they just, you know, won a Super Bowl or something. So just a plug for, some of that makes a big difference. That's it, thank you.
Okay, cool, anybody else?
Are we still working on MSBA certifications? I think Rhonda, you had mentioned that we were doing, what are we doing on that?
Well, I can start keeping track. I know, I've kind of seen where we've been going, so.
You and I can meet up.
Sure.
Because I've been also keeping track as well, so.
Sure, and I've got some ideas of some things we can do now that school's started, too.
And we're actually moving along on the Governor's Award, really, really good, so.
I might add one more thing. Mike, I would say, he gave the comment about Hyde also, you could see the concept of the Hyde-Benton solution was very much possibility. And we were taken through by the Principal of Hyde and the Assistant Principal. And, and Dr. McGinnis had done a great job, you know, communicating with them, so there was no awkwardness in terms of that. And, and the size, shape of the building was actually, was actually good. If, if you haven't been able to see that, I would encourage you to do that because it was wondering, yes, well, what would we be putting? And then how would we use that building, some of those questions. Some of them are answered in the memorandum that was sent out today. But the building was certainly appropriate to be used in the manner that they're talking about doing.
Okay, future meetings and events? October the thirteenth, it will be our next board work session. The fourteenth, Finance Committee meeting. Sixteenth, ooh, is that all in the same week?
It happens to fall.
It's our academics meeting. And then the next week after that, town hall meeting on the twenty-first. And then at the end of that week, it's our annual conference. The Monday after that, it will be the board meeting, and so that's a busy month. And so is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
I need you to read that part.
Can you read that?
I need you to read that part of the agenda.
I motion to adjourn executive session pursuant to six ten point zero two one, those meetings close records for legal hiring, firing discipline of any particular employees individually and then filed for some records.
Perfect, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
All right, the meeting's adjourned.